Good evening, welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for November 28th, 2023. I will call this meeting to order. We have, I'm going to ask everyone to please silence your cell phones and devices as we start the meeting this evening. I even had mine go off during the study session tonight. Did you hear that? And we will move into our invocation, which will be presented by, offered by Sharon Katsounas, lay leader at First United Methodist Church of Gilbert. Thank you Sharon for joining us.
Thank you council. Good evening neighbors. Let's pray. Dear heavenly father, we come together as a community with hearts full of gratitude and hope. We thank you for the gift of community, for the bonds that unite us, and the strength we find in each other. In this season of celebration and togetherness, we lift up our community to you. May your love and grace abound among us, fostering unity, understanding and compassion. Help us to cherish and appreciate the diversity within our community, recognizing that it's through our differences that we can grow and learn from each other. Loving God, we pray for those who may be facing challenges during this time. Bring comfort to those who are lonely, healing to those who are hurting, and hope to those who may be struggling. May our community be a source of support and encouragement to all its members. In the midst of all the festivities, help us to remember the true meaning of this season, the gift of your son Jesus. May his love be the guiding light in our community, inspiring us to love and serve one another selflessly. As we share meals, exchange gifts, and enjoy the company of our neighbors, let us not forget those who are less fortunate. Give us hearts of generosity and compassion, prompting us to reach out to those in need and make a positive impact on the lives of others. Lord bless our community with peace and joy that extends beyond this season. May the spirit of unity and goodwill prevail throughout the coming year, making Gilbert, Arizona, a beacon of love and kindness. We offer this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Sharon, thank you for sharing this evening and mentioning gratitude at the very beginning. Sharon helped to organize the gratitude gathering that was held a few weeks ago that was a combination of Gilbert and Chandler, and it was a lovely evening to come together and just celebrate all that's good in our communities. And I appreciate you stepping up to come in and offer the invocation this evening too. We very much appreciate you. Next, we will have our pledge of allegiance led by council member Anderson.
Please join me in reciting our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to ask our town clerk to please offer the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni?
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley?
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski?
Here.
And councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you Chevelli, now we'll move on to, we don't have any presentations and proclamations this evening, we'll move on to communications from citizens. I pass to Vice Mayor Tilke.
Thank you mayor. Before I begin, I just want to check with Chevelli, these are the only two?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. Good evening, the Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in a bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them, and at the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. So the, we ask that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name, and place a residence, and then begin speaking. We will have three minutes, and you'll see the time clock on the monitor in front of you. So the first one who comes up will need to turn on the red light, you'll see it red up here, that way you'll know your mic is live. And then at the conclusion, we will call the next person up. Tonight, we only have two speakers. The first is Brandon Riff, followed by Bruce Levich. Brandon?
I've got a court document here filed by the town that says that I caused an actual disruption and failed to abide by the town's required rules of decorum as justification for rejecting us, having the police remove us from the council meeting. I know you're not getting the best advice from your attorney, he seems to drop the ball a lot. So I'm going to read just two quick excerpts here from two landmark cases. The first is White versus City of Norwalk. And it says basically that a speaker can disrupt a meeting by talking too long, being unduly repetitious, et cetera, et cetera. And it says that a disruption occurs when the council is prevented from accomplishing its business in a reasonably efficient manner. That's the definition of a disruption. Now, Norris versus City of Santa Cruz says, in this case, cities argue, the city argues that they may define a disturbance in any way they choose. Specifically, the city argues that it has defined any violation of its decorum rules to be a disturbance. Therefore, it reasons that, the first case, Norwalk permits the city to reject anyone for violating the city's rules. Here's what the court said. "We must respectfully reject a city's attempt to engage us in double speak. Actual disruption means actual disruption. It does not mean constructive disruption, technical disruption, virtual disruption, non-protonk disruption, or imaginary disruption. The city cannot define disruption so as to include non-disruption to invoke the aid of the Norwalk case." So we've got this guy, Ken Fields, who does an investigation, quote unquote. By the way, he's unlicensed, he's not a private investigator. I looked at the statutes, my attorney looked at the statutes. We'll be sending a formal request for a criminal investigation. It is against the law to perform a private investigation without a license, just as much as it's against the law for me to perform dentistry, practice dentistry without a license. It's a crime. And you guys paid and used public money, it's a total hit job, total cover-up. I'm looking at it, I'll give you a couple examples while my time is still active. He's leading the witnesses, he says to a witness, he only interviewed us, me and Ryan, says he interviewed the mayor, won't give us the video, makes no mention of the questions asked of the mayor, makes no mention of what the mayor's answers were. Interviewed one witness, that witness, he didn't mention in his report anything that guy said, so I really wanted to know what that guy said. So I got the transcript, and I was shocked. I was absolutely shocked. I'm looking at it, and I'll give you a couple examples. He's leading the witness, and he left all of his responses out. You would think an investigation about somebody saying, hey, I was not disruptive, and somebody else saying, yes, you were, you'd want to know what that witness said. By the way, he wouldn't, he wouldn't interview any of the other witnesses, said it wouldn't be fruitful to interview an eyewitness. Unbelievable. I'll give you just a couple quick examples, and then I'll step away. Why didn't you hold your sign, oh, you said, I'm sorry, you didn't hold your sign above your head, you just held it in front of you, right? And the witness says, I had it propped in front of me, and I did have it, well, I was, I did have it over my head as well. And then in his report, Judge Fields says, "The investigation has revealed, however, that the complatants at times were holding their signs above their heads, unlike other sign holders at the meeting." He's saying that nobody else was doing that, when his witness says, yeah, I did do that. It's a lie. I don't care what you call it, it's a lie. He says here, the complatants were asked, last one.
Thank you.
Complatants were asked to leave the council meeting because the manner in which they were displaying a poster stating, stop lying. I think Judge Fields needs that sign also, because nothing but lies in here. Nobody asked us to leave, the mayor ordered the police to remove us. He says here, the request to leave was made by the police officers of the town of Gilbert. And then he says that Mayor Peterson asked that certain signs be removed upon the manner display, being displayed, not content. Video evidence of the mayor stating, remove the people from the back of the room, please, those three people holding up signs, that's the truth. This is ridiculous, it's embarrassing. I don't appreciate my taxpayer dollars going toward a phony fraud who's unlicensed and a town attorney who doesn't know better and allowed it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you Brandon. Up next is Bruce Levich.
Can you push the button on the mic there? It needs to, it'll light up when it's on.
Okay.
There we, thank you.
Good evening mayor and council members. I'm here to talk on number nine. I got a message back on the 12th, Sunday night about nine o'clock, the Gilbert newspaper saying that there's going to be a rate increase. So, I'm very diligent, I went to the city website, and it wasn't on. I called the mayor's office, I called a couple of council members, I texted you, nobody got back to me that Monday, that Tuesday. It's called transparency. I wanted to look at the paperwork about this rate increase. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I spoke to you last November in regards to the light rail. I'm back again, once a year, like a no-good penny. Finally, somebody contacted Mr. Braun, and he said, oops, we forgot to put it up on the website. Well, that's transparency. I'm a taxpayer of the town of Gilbert. I want to know why it wasn't up. And I had to go through all these hoops and whistles. He was the only person, he was a gentleman, he called me back. But if you let me go on here, I'm in support of a strong different structure for the town of Gilbert, and the rate increase should be gradual to not to hurt senior citizens, the disabled in this town, and the hard-working families in Gilbert that are trying to make a living. With the increase in costs from groceries to construction costs, the town needs to prioritize. The town of Gilbert is still approving apartment complexes, water park and sand tan, we're short water. I seen this coming 10 years ago, that something like this was going to happen. We live in the desert. The biggest user, I think, of water in Gilbert is probably the town. So what, what is the town's action plan for all the property that they own? The parks, the ballparks, are they going to put gravel on it? And not water it? I haven't seen any action plan. But you want us, as you said in the, one of the council members, well, we have to tighten our belt. Well, the town of Gilbert needs to tighten their belt also, not just the residents. You know, it works both ways. I'm in support of what you're going to do, but I think it needs to be gradual and not hurt our citizens in this good town. And I hope you, you take it to heart. And also, I got a charge of Mr. Braun saying that all the garbage trucks need to be replaced. Well, my previous employer in law enforcement, we had what was called a fleet manager. When the vehicles hit 100,000 miles, they went before the county board of supervisors and got a procurement and had them replaced. I can't believe all the garbage trucks are now going to hell in a handbasket all at once. And I believe, one more second.
Thank you.
And he said, you know, the supply chain, well, COVID didn't hit until 2020. How about 2018, there was no problem with the supply chain. So, you know, we need to, if you're going to put this stuff out, have things accurate, and please be transparent, that I don't have to make a gazillion calls, so it's on the website, so other citizens can view it. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. With that, that's it for the communications from citizens, mayor.
Thank you Vice Mayor, moving on to the consent agenda, back to you.
Thank you. Mayor, there was not a request to pull anything from the consent agenda, therefore I'd make a motion to approve consent items number one through five.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you Vice Mayor. Consent agenda is handled for this evening. Moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda, items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment may do so. We have two items on our public hearing item agenda. I will open the public hearing, one is a liquor license. Would anyone like a presentation on that, or would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Thank you. Vice Mayor has made a motion, can I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Buckley, please vote. Moving on to item number eight, I never closed a public hearing, so it's still open, excuse me, item number seven, moving on to item number seven, public hearing is still open. Moving on to fees, conduct a hearing on proposed system development fees for the necessary public services of land use assumptions and infrastructure. Would we please have, who's doing the presentation? Kelly? Kelly Fost, please come down and do a presentation on the fees. Thank you Kelly.
Thank you mayor and council. I've got just a quick presentation with about 10 slides for overview of what's happening tonight with the system development fee updates. Perfect. So tonight is a public hearing, and we are talking about the system development fees, which are fees charged by the city to offset the cost of new growth. They are not paid by existing residents or businesses, they are only paid by new residents and businesses that move in and build in our community, and the cost is to offset their impact to our infrastructure in the community. It goes with the philosophy that the town has historically had of growth pays for growth. State statute does require that we update these fees every five years at least. We did update the water infrastructure just recently because of the big changes with the North Water Treatment Plant, but our other fees are at that five-year mark, so we're doing them all together at the five-year mark to get them updated. The timeline is very long with this process, with a lot of public outreach, so we started in September with that notice of intent, letting all of our partners know that we were planning to update the fees, and that really kicks off the public outreach and collaboration process. Tonight is the public hearing for the land use assumptions, what we think will happen with our growth, and then our infrastructure improvements plan, which is the projects that are needed to provide infrastructure for the growth. And then we, the next step would be in January to actually adopt the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. The fees come next. As a matter of transparency in the town, we provide the study with the fees from the very beginning, just to help with the discussion and be really transparent, but the fees aren't actually adopted. There's a public hearing in February planned, and then adoption wouldn't be until April of next year, and then the fees wouldn't go into effect until at least 75 days after that, which would be July 1 of 2024. So a very long process. With the stakeholder outreach, we have been able to have meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, their policy committee, the Home Builders Association, we do have another meeting planned with the Home Builders Association this coming week to continue dialogue with them. We have reached out to the multifamily association, they have received the study but haven't come back with any questions. The growth assumptions that are in the plan are lower growth assumptions than we've had over the past 10 years. Our building permits are slowing. The assumptions do align with the MAG, Maricopa Association of Governments, their population and housing estimates, so we're trying to be very transparent about where that data comes from, and it is a slower growth that is planned over the next 10 years. The service area would be all of the town for all of the fees except the wastewater fee, and it's broken into two sections, which is the same as it's historically been for our study, the Neely area and the Greenfield area, which are shown on the map, and that's because they're served by two different wastewater treatment facilities. The infrastructure improvement plan, so all of the infrastructure that is included in the study are necessary to serve new growth, they maintain the existing level of service, we can't increase the level of service for new growth, it's the same as our current residents have, and it follows the guidelines of state statute. The fees are looking to increase quite substantially, so it would be about doubling. For comparison though, we wanted to give you some information about what single-family housing value has also done over that period of time. So we have full cash value from the Maricopa County Assessor's Office, which was about 250,000 in 2019 when our last study was done, compared to the fees were about 8% of the home value. With the fees that are proposed now and the home values that have changed, it does maintain about the same ratio, about 9% of the total home value, even though we've seen a substantial increase. Darn that inflation, it's getting everyone. With the, this is what it looks like for the Greenfield area and the Neely area, old fees on the left, and then the new fees, or proposed fees would be on the right. And you can see all of the different categories, wastewater, water resources, parks and recreation, roads, traffic signals, police and fire are the categories. Commercial is about the same with the increase here, this is an example of about a 2,500-square-foot restaurant standalone. We just pulled a typical permit and ran the fees for what it would be under the two scenarios there. The next steps is tonight, we'll do the public hearings, receive any feedback on land use assumptions, infrastructure improvements, plan to accommodate growth. We'll continue to work with our stakeholders, and then incorporate any of that feedback in for the January 9th meeting, which is when we would ask council to adopt and make a decision on the actual land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. Any questions for me?
Thank you Kelly, any questions for Kelly at this time? Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi Kelly, thank you for making that presentation. In the packet of information, it had a report that had some assumptions on like inflation rate increase and some of the projects that were anticipated to be funded. I understand that growth pays for growth, but I was a bit surprised to see a few projects such as the Ocatillo Road Bridge that have other funding sources. Can you explain how that report separates out infrastructure and how it can be paid for by other means, because it may be necessary with or without growth?
Sure. So we do include different infrastructure that's in there. The Ocatillo Bridge that you mentioned has several funding sources on it. The study goes through and prorates, we believe this portion is for traffic that would be associated with new growth, and we looked at what current traffic is on the roads north and south of Ocatillo Bridge to say, we believe there's about this much traffic that would be for existing growth. And so anything that's for existing would need to be paid for with another funding source accommodating that traffic. And then anything that's associated with new residents or businesses moving in, only that portion would be included in the study to be paid for with this money, with the system development fees.
Could you also talk a little bit about the assumptions for the inflation? I know we've seen higher inflation in the past few years, but this, these were assumptions for inflation in coming years.
Yes, so we had to start the study with the information we had available at the time, which would have been the fiscal '24, so current year's CIP information. And then we recognized that we are seeing large amounts of inflation, so we put an assumption in there of 40% increase from '24 to '25, and then I believe a 10%, and then 3%. So hopefully it moderates after that. Now that we're starting to get some of the CIP information, it's not ready to be made public, we're still working on it internally, but as we worked with our consultant, most of the projects increased by that amount or more, so the study fees would actually go up from where they are now if we updated all of the project information to be what we're planning for the fiscal '25 CIP. So we know that it is a large increase, but it is actually a conservative assumption compared to what we're seeing in the actuals coming from CIP.
I have one more question. I saw that a large part of the increase was related to water and wastewater projects and infrastructure. Is that because of the wastewater treatment plant project, or is it a combination?
The water treatment plant is a large part of it. Only a portion, only the portion of the plant costs that are moving it from a 45 million gallon per day facility to a 60 million gallon day facility are included in the study, but the new costs to construct the plant are substantially higher than the cost per gallon was in the past, and so we are seeing an increase there.
Okay, and that's good to hear that it was just for that increase in capacity, but it's, it's still always a bit concerning when you have this big project, and it, it may seem to skew numbers when that, when that facility is going to serve our community for a really long time, for decades and decades, and so I don't want it to overburden our, our community in the short term, just because of a large capital improvement project like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson?
I had noticed you had a slide up for a 2,500-square-foot restaurant or so. Would that not kind of prevent growth at that, much of an increase, that's two and a half, three times the cost? Wouldn't it stop? I mean, I want growth to pay for growth, but wouldn't that kind of stop growth?
I, I would certainly hope not, that's definitely a question for council to look at. What we're doing is calculating, this is the cost that it will be for us to provide service to these residents and businesses to maintain our level of service in the community that we currently have, and... that we currently have, and hopefully they also have inflation on their revenue side, where both sides are growing for their business.
That's a stout number to be able to build a 2,500 square foot restaurant. I mean, really stout number. And if they don't, if there is no growth because of the increased fees, which again, I want growth to pay for growth, but then who pays for the Ocatillo Bridge? Because if it's not being subsidized by this, your system developed, by the system development fees, how does it get paid for then?
If we have no additional new growth?
Or extremely minor, yes.
So they would pay their portion of it, and then at some point in the future, I, I assume at some point in the future, the growth will come, that it won't stop completely in the town. But I, those are probably assumptions more for policy level. I know more the financial side.
All right.
Councilmember Anderson?
Sorry. Kelly, a lot of our new growth into the future as we approach build out is going to be infill. Is that factored in in any way where there's already infrastructure in place to service those parcels? Are we charging them double for that?
Good question, Councilmember Anderson. We do work hard not to charge doubly, so if there is a single-family house already on the property that, for example, has a three-quarter inch meter, and they're splitting it and they're going to build two houses on the property instead, they already have rights to the infrastructure for one three-quarter inch meter. They would only need to pay for the increase, which would be the second one. Same with the other fees. So if, it's only the increase from the infrastructure that they currently have.
Okay. Is that true for fire, police service also, that it's the same charge?
Yeah, so the square foot of the building that exists currently would already have that level of service. They would only need to pay for the increased square footage.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Kelly. I know we're, we have a one-on-one scheduled on this, and so I'll get into the details with you when we have an opportunity. In regards to Councilman Torgerson's concern, the reality is if growth were to start, stop, we would have to restructure the way that we pay for that, and that means all the residents and businesses that are here today will end up paying for it in the future. I mean, that would be the end result if, if growth stopped. I believe we do this every five years, and we have to readjust those numbers as we go along. So I think the bottom line is we would all be paying for that at, at a different time. I was part of that original group when we implemented system development fees, and while it may sound flippant when I say it, the reality even then was that last house is going to have a lot of system development fees they're going to be responsible for, and it is a flippant way of saying that what we're seeing today is the fact that growth has slowed, those dollars are going up, and also the cost is going up. And I don't know how, and I, I don't know if it's 20 years ago, it could be 15 years ago that we put these into place, but you know, we were, and we continue to look into the future and try to estimate what those costs are going to be, what our needs are going to be, and that's why we do this comprehensive capital improvements program and outline how the payments are going to be paid. All of that to say, here we are now, getting close to build out, and growth paying for growth means something a little different than it did when we were growing so rapidly, right? Now it's, we're going to have less growth. Who's going to pay for it? If, if new growth doesn't pay, then that's going to be distributed amongst everybody that's here today, and that's the big question. I don't have the answer. I wish I had the answer. I'm just saying that is the big question that we're faced with, and I appreciate, you know, the fact that we have the opportunity to look at some of these assumptions, and maybe there's something we could review or, and change, I don't know, but unfortunately, it's a hard cold truth, right? Someone's got to pay for it, and it's either us or us together, you know, and so I'm looking forward to our one-on-one, but I thought I would just share that in, in response to your comment.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Yeah, and that, that was my point in saying that if something's getting built and we don't have enough growth to support that, all of us will end up paying for it. And then maybe that, I mean, I'm not saying the bridge isn't necessary at some point, but that bridge becomes everybody's burden, yet there's only X amount of cars that are going on. We're trying to encourage more, but we're not going to have growth there to support it, but we're going to pay for it, and that bill keeps going up all the time. I, I can't even remember the last number that was attached to the building of that bridge, and it's stout. So I want to think of the balance to keep the encouragement to grow and be dense without having it fall back on the residents.
Councilmember Buckley?
I would just, I would just like to say I'm totally in line with what Kathy was talking about, and that those were some of the things that I was going to maybe discuss as well. I just think that it's a huge number for, for commercial right now, and I would like to see us, you know, be able to discuss that and maybe somehow reevaluate those numbers if possible. I know you guys have worked hard to get where you are here, but I just, I just think and feel that that, that's a huge number to put out there right now. But thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Reiterate what everyone said. And it may not be your department per se, Kelly, but are we meeting with the stakeholders, Chamber of Commerce, and those kinds of things to get their feedback on this also, as far as affordability goes and, you know, what they foresee also?
Yes, any feedback that they provide during the meeting. So as, as staff, we create the study that is the maximum amount supported by statute, and then as policymakers, you can make the decision about what fee you want to implement. If you can do something lower, you can't do something higher. If you do something lower, then the options are we have a lower level of service moving forward, or existing residents have to pay to maintain the same level of service for the new people.
Sure. Just a big number. I hope we can work on it together. It's, that's a big number. Thanks.
Unfortunately, it's bigger because of inflation, and we're all facing that, including the town, and how do we do the projects that we want to do and need to do? There's infrastructure projects that need to be done, and there are infrastructure projects that need to be done because of the new growth, and there's infrastructure projects because of the fact that the town grew so fast all at the same time. Like Vice Mayor mentioned, that they're all aging out at this point, and it's unfortunate that it's happening right now as inflation is so high, pushing all the other costs up. Kelly, I look forward to meeting with you on this. I'd like to arrange some time for us to sit together and discuss it. We do have somebody that would like to speak from the public, so I'll let you sit down, and then we can call you back up if we have any follow-up questions, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I have three requests to speak, but they're all requesting, the first request is from Brennan Ray, and the other two are requesting that we give their time to Brennan Ray. So I'm going to just give Brennan Ray a little extra time and give you six minutes, Brennan, if you'll come up to the middle podium there. Thank you. I think you know the drill. Just introduce yourself, please. There you go.
There we go. There we go. I'm learning this. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here representing a number of clients, but specifically the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you very briefly, and you saw Kelly put up a list of a December 4th meeting. That meeting's with me. So we look forward to the opportunity to talk with staff as well, because there are a number of concerns as we have had the opportunity to review the draft. First and foremost, I think from a legal perspective, when we look at it, we believe there are some issues from a state statute perspective, and certainly the recent state Supreme Court case of Morana versus the Southern Home Builders Association case as well. Specifically, those cases and statutes talking about proportionality and what is fair. It is, there is no question, you will not hear me argue, I've stand up, stood before you and represented a number of developers, that growth does pay for itself. And we're certainly not here to advocate that we should wipe our hands of it and have nothing to do with continuing to pay for that growth. But as we look at it, I believe that there are a number of underlying assumptions in this that really should cause us to reflect and really question, how much of that burden should we place according to the report on 17,000 people? Because that's essentially what we're talking about. The population assumption growth is 17,000 people, and that's what we're looking to burden. Just to give you an idea of the total cost is, and my math is probably off, we're talking about between fire, police, traffic, and parks, a total of $107,850,267. That's a hefty number when you aggregate it over the course of everything that needs to be done. That breaks down to roughly 6,000 per person. If we factor that down even further, down to a house, and what does that break down to on a mortgage? At today's rates and everything, you factor a 30-year mortgage, a homeowner will need to pay an additional $332 a month over the life of a 30-year mortgage. That's equates to an additional $112,000 that they are paying on top of anything else. Because while growth pays for itself, I will tell you that that is a fixed line item in any developer's budget that gets immediately passed through to the end user. It does not come out of other things. It goes to the end homeowner, the end renter, the end commercial developer, industrial office, whatever you want to say, that number is passed through directly to them. So as we look at it, obviously, you know, as some of you have noted, there's a real concern with the inflation rates. Certainly, you know, if you look at the base assumption rates, you know, 20 and 10, and then 3%, but then we look at the cumulative effect of that in the aggregate, and we're talking in some instances, 120 to 167% of inflation that's occurring per the study. You look and you look detailed down into the fees, some of that inflation ranges from 120 to 144% increase. Comment was made, we hope revenue grows that fast. I'm not sure that I know of any business, be they a residential developer or a commercial developer, that presumes that they're going to have revenues of 120% up to 140% based on some of these fees that we're looking at and stuff like that. So again, we're not saying that the fees shouldn't be increased. We're not here to do that, but just as we look at it in context, and just to give you an idea, across the valley, there, you guys are obviously competitive with a number of municipalities in attracting business and ensuring growth. But your proposed fees, the all-in number when you look at not only the system development fees, but the water and wastewater impact fees, as you look at those, that is going to be two times, double more than what anyone charges today across the valley. It is two times even some of the draft studies that are underway in other municipalities, and so that is definitely a huge increase and a concern. And then as we look at it, again, in some instances, there are some underlying assumptions for improvements to existing roadways, existing things, and that's attributed 100% new growth. I find that curious because some of those same improvements are going to benefit the existing residents as well. And while we cannot apportion that cost to the existing residents, still there is a benefit that is incurred by them for these improvements. The other thing that I would tell in the time that remains, and specifically as we look at it, what tonight is and the next step on January night deals with the land use assumptions and the IIP. There are a number of things that if we look at that from traffic and roads and intersections where I want to make sure that we're not double-dipping, because I know having represented a number of developers, when they come into a corner that's undeveloped, your transportation staff is very good at ensuring that our traffic reports say that we need a traffic signal, or that we need this roadway improvement. And so the developer will then pay those fees for the actual physical construction. And I know there are a number of roads and intersections where developers, my belief is, is that they have already paid money into the kitty, so to speak, for that. And so as we look at that, now we're going to charge then system development fees to improve intersections that the town may already have money in their coffers for. Just a little bit curious, and those are questions, of course, that we will go through with staff because ultimately that, that rests with them. And I could go on and on, but in my time that remains, again, we look forward to working with staff. We're not here to say that there shouldn't be an increase in all that, it'd be absurd. But we are here to say, let's be reasonable, let's figure out a way to, to make things work together.
That was perfect, Brennan. Does anyone have any, this is public hearing portion of our agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Brennan specifically while he's at the podium? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like Kelly to come back? Do you have any further questions or comments for Kelly? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. I do not have any online public comments for this, for anything on our public hearing agenda. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none. We'll all plan to meet with Kelly over the next few weeks before January 9th. I'm seeing some head nods. Thank you, Kelly, and staff presentation. Thank you, Brennan Ray, for coming out to share your thoughts, and thank you for being an active participant in the process. We do what we do best because we have stakeholders like you that are always active in the, in the projects that we're looking at. And moving on to our administrative items, we have just two items on our agenda. One is council administrative item to review and discuss final, final report and the recommendation of a code of ethics complaint filed against me by Brandon Riff and Ryan Handelsman, and I will pass off to the Vice Mayor.
Mayor, could I ask that we hear the fees first and do that one second? Because I think there's public information that I think the public would like to hear.
Okay, then we'll move on to item number nine, fees. There's two portions to this, excuse me, three portions to this on our agenda this evening, to direct staff to publish a notice of intention to increase rates, which means we're just putting this out for a possibility of increasing the fees, set the public hearing date for February 6th of 2024, and a contingency request for $70,000 for traditional media and print campaign to get, make sure that we are able to get the information out that was mentioned during the public comment this evening. Would you like a presentation, staff? From staff, excuse me. And I see Eric making his way to the podium.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this important information for our community. I want to begin by first acknowledging the great responsibility that the Town Council has in planning for the future and the weight of the decisions you are all asked to make. When it comes to water rates, it can sometimes be condensed into a desire to not have a brown lawn, which isn't trivial, but it isn't the extent of the decision either. There are outside forces acting on our ability to provide clean, reliable water service to our residents. These forces could be the pollution affecting our water supply, or drought decreasing the amount of water we have. Another force acting on us is simply the passage of time and how infrastructure wears out over time and needs to be replaced. If we do not meet these challenges head-on, our community could be reduced to the option that others, even in the valley, face, which is to haul water for basic needs. That potential future puts a brown lawn into perspective, I think. The good news I have for you is that this council and the community is proactive and always rises to meet these challenges before it, and I'll present to you a plan tonight for how we will meet those current challenges and continue Gilbert's exceptional quality of life, which of course is a key point of this conversation. Our community loves Gilbert. 97% of the respondents in the 2021 National Community Survey gave positive reviews of the town as a place to live and the overall quality of life. This community did not happen by accident, and significant efforts in planning, funding, and maintaining the infrastructure that supports the quality of life have been invested in over many years and decades. This is reflected in the result that 95% of respondents felt very or somewhat safe from fire, flood, or natural disasters, and that 86% rated the quality of the utility infrastructure as excellent or good. The presentation of rates tonight and the vital need- The presentation of rates tonight and the vital needs that the additional revenue will fund will help continue to support these high satisfaction ratings and those expectations that our community has for us. The high quality of life did not happen overnight, and it's primarily the result of three things: vision and strategic planning, consistent intentional investments in infrastructure and resources by our town council's leadership over decades, and just as importantly, sound financial policies and practices that are adopted by the town council. The town council has adopted policy statements regarding user fees. The water fund and the solid waste and recycling fund are what we call enterprise funds. This means that user fees need to be collected to recover the entire cost of operations. This also means that as a financial practice, we do not subsidize these utilities. Rates are how we fund critical water and infrastructure and services. Utilities are separate financial entities under the Gilbert umbrella that operate financially independently and are not subsidized by taxes and do not subsidize taxes. Adequate fund balances are maintained to allow Gilbert to continue providing services to the community in case of unexpected emergencies or economic downturns. Following these policies is a key part of the reason that we have AAA bond ratings. There are less than fifty communities in the country with that rating, and Gilbert is one of them. This elite rating enables Gilbert to secure the best interest rates when we bond. If we stop following our policies or take actions that may indicate that we might have difficulty repaying our bonds, in essence, not having enough revenue from rates to repay them, then it could impact our future ratings and the interest we pay on future bonds, and then the financing of existing debt as well. Now, it can be confusing or unclear what we're trying to accomplish when you look at a singular financial policy, an individual infrastructure project, or service offering. But when you look at these perspectives, from the perspective of the city of the future, the picture becomes clear. We're continuing our exceptional service, and we're building the foundation for future With those financial policies in mind, this evening's action item pertains to our utility rates. We have four utility rates on most bills: water, solid waste recycling, wastewater, and environmental compliance. Tonight, we're going to focus on water and solid waste and recycling. I will cover the reasons for the rate increase in more detail, but I'm going to boil it down for you for three main reasons right now. The first reason is that the volume of trash that we dispose of and the cost to dispose of that have risen significantly on a per customer basis. Trucks now cost nearly double what they were two years ago, now over half a million dollars each. And the cost to keep our aging fleet running have skyrocketed. But the service requires that we continue despite these rate pressures. You're all familiar with our residential services, the blue and black containers, the bulk trash program, and our household hazardous waste drop-off facility. Those are top-of-the-line services from any community in the valley. We also have a voluntary commercial program, which includes the large roll-off containers and the traditional dumpsters. It also requires a rate increase as it is a separate fund from the residential collections rate fund, but it faces the same issues. We're receiving ten percent higher tonnage than we were before COVID, which has outpaced our customer growth significantly. On top of that, we've had a ten percent higher fee per ton disposed at the landfill, which has resulted in a nearly twenty-five percent increase in total disposal costs just in the last four years. As our fleet of trucks ages, because we cannot purchase new ones due to supply chain disruptions, the cost to repair the older ones has nearly doubled in the last four years. This swallows up any available funding to purchase new vehicles, should we even be able to get in line and order them. And we've also accrued a thirty percent increase in the cost of parts and supplies for those trucks in just the last four years. The fleet of the automated side loaders is aging quickly, like I mentioned, because replacements are few and far between, and the new trucks have risen by fifty percent in the last few years. The life expectancy of one of those trucks is six years, but half of our fleet is older than that six-year life expectancy. Older vehicles means more problems, more breakdowns, and they lead to service disruptions. This is a nearly ten million dollar problem to replace the trucks that have already reached life expectancy. Clearly, an investment is needed in order to meet the level of service that our community Our expenses are far outseating our revenues, and our solid waste and recycling funds are approaching empty. But our rate proposal helps bring them into balance. These are the list of service offerings, and you notice that Gilbert is at the top. These are in order of highest quality to lowest quality of services. Our residents and our businesses expect the highest quality and reliability of these services. That quality and reliability comes at an increased cost. That cost is eight dollars and fifty-two cents additionally per month for most of our residential customers. We'll be able to continue top-notch services at these new rates. There's a super, super complicated level of service for our commercial customers, as exemplified by this graph, but they amount to an average of twenty-five percent across the board increase. Now, as I transition to water service, I want to remind our public what the impact of water service has on the community. An examination of other cities might be helpful. The tragic wildfire in Lahaina was responsible for hundreds of deaths and the destruction of most of the town. The water system failed, which caused firefighting efforts to halt. It's impossible to say if the town could have been saved in whole, but at least some of the catastrophe could have been reduced with a working water and therefore firefighting system. All across the country, there's a growing awareness of the reckoning coming to our public water systems, whether because of generations of lack of funding and maintenance, care for the water resource itself, or the impact of human pollution and overuse. These are real-life issues that happen when infrastructure and services are not maintained. This is why our team anticipates potential problems, and we execute planning and investments to ensure quality for our community. We have an example from recent memory where our system was put to the test when a development came under construction caught fire. An estimated two million gallons was used over the several hours-long incident, but our firefighters were never without sufficient water supply and pressure to slow that blaze, and every fire hydrant they connected to worked. This is not an accident due to our high level of service in our water system, the proactive repair and maintenance of our infrastructure, and our dedicated team of highly skilled professionals that operate the system. And consider the event from just a few months ago, when a monsoon storm destroyed nearly a dozen power poles that serve energy to the CAP pumping plant, which is the sole source of water to the Santana Vista Water Treatment Plant. As the water supply in the canal dwindled, our water team activated existing emergency response plans, which included firing up the backup water production infrastructure, modifying operations, and actively communicating with regional partners to ensure uninterrupted water service for our customers. Without the investments in the infrastructure, a highly trained and professional workforce, as well as the maintenance and repair of the water system, this could have become a water emergency for our customers. But because Gilbert makes these investments, it did not become an emergency. These not-near misses highlight why our community enjoys a high standard of living, but it isn't by accident. The continual investments make this possible. But we are not perfect. We have also had failures of our infrastructure, and they are increasing in frequency and impact to the community in terms of cost and inconvenience. Just in the last eleven months, we've had three major water issues that have caused expensive repair costs and sizable impacts to our traffic flow. Since much of our infrastructure is located underneath roads, these failures tend to be very public failures, which over time can erode the confidence in the public that they have in us to serve them efficiently. We want to avoid that. Now that we've seen the good and the bad of water service, we're going to explore how the community investments in water service are actually used. When we collect rate revenue, it goes into one fund and then is used or separated into three main areas. The first is operation and maintenance, and these are the activities that come to mind when you think of running a utility: operating a well, pumping water in the distribution system, and maintaining infrastructure in order to keep it in good working condition. One-time expenses are typically capital projects that aren't due to growth and that are not due to replacement, like adding water quality equipment that were not original to the utility design. This is the main lever that we have to keep rates low or steady. Unfortunately, this usually means delaying vital projects beyond industry standard or equipment becomes near failure. Delaying these projects has direct implications on the useful life of the infrastructure and therefore the overall cost to the community for ownership, because replacement cost is much higher than just good maintenance. The last area is repair and replacement fund. This is used to fix broken or replace dead or dying equipment and facilities. As our infrastructure ages, the repair and replacement fund's importance looms, because having funds set aside for these known expenses will keep rates more consistent over time. And yet, our water repair and replacement fund is nearly empty. With this solid understanding of the water finances in hand, now let's explore the cost pressures on the utility. Again, there are three main factors that are driving these needs: the need for water resource resiliency, skyrocketing construction costs, and new awareness of additional infrastructure needs. We're not alone in these cost pressures either. Every city in the valley is in a similar situation as we are. How they choose to deal with their pressures is their choice. We prefer to meet these challenges head-on and not pass them to our successors. Let's look at these individual factors in detail. Here's what the cost increase of raw water looks like visually. This was water cost as a percentage of what it costs to operate the entire utility. You can see that line is increasing. Without increasing the operations funding, there is less money left to operate the utility as a whole. In fiscal year seventeen, the cost to buy raw water was about six million dollars. Next year, it's budgeted above ten million dollars, which is a sixty-six percent increase. A longtime part of our water resiliency plan was adding new wells. The acceleration of a ten-year well drilling plan into two years has a large effect on our CIP and on our budget, but these are not projects that we can delay in light of the Colorado River conditions. Every proactive measure to the Colorado River shortage on this slide requires a significant new cost above and beyond previous plans. As an example, that well program I just mentioned is fifty-six million dollars over two years instead of ten. Increased water conservation programs are likely a couple hundred thousand dollars every year ongoing, and the large infrastructure projects in our water portfolio resiliency could reach a hundred million dollars in total. But we're endeavoring to make good on the promise that the council has made to the community, because none of us want to be responsible for headlines like these from communities whose leaders have failed them. Construction and repair and replacement of infrastructure is a large portion of the cost of operating these utilities. The local average cost of construction has risen incredibly by fifty-five percent over the last three years. When you consider that the five-year CIP for water alone is in the several hundred million dollar range, and that is the most affected portion of our budget by inflation, you can easily understand the pressure that we're facing, especially when you consider that we only collect about sixty million dollars of revenue a year currently. And that North Water Treatment Plant reconstruction, that has the highest impact on our bottom line. And its initial project, its initial project cost has evolved and been adjusted, as is normal practice, as design has evolved over the years. Despite a very thorough value engineering effort in 2022, inflation of labor and materials has caused a large increase in the cost of this project. This is the single most important factor that is driving these rate needs. The next GMP for the next phase of the water treatment plant will come before council next month, and the funding of that is contingent upon these rates, funding the rest of that Additionally, we identified new projects through our master plan, but with limited funding, we had to prioritize only the most time-sensitive, urgent projects. The projects kept inside the five-year plan were those addressing an immediate deficiency in our system or were needed to utilize the full capacity of the North Water Treatment Plant when that expansion is complete. Additionally, as we went through our budget prioritization project, process, we knew that we could not financially do everything that we need to do, and so we prioritized our capital plan by keeping in it projects that are already ongoing, like the North Water Treatment Plant. Keeping waterline replacements aligned with streets reconstruction minimizes disruption to the community, and those critical master plan projects and the projects that support resiliency in the face of water supply disruptions are contained in the budget that these rates will support. Yet we're still deferring over four hundred million dollars in projects, which will add to a backlog of needed infrastructure improvements. As we walk through in detail at the council retreat, our checkbook is overdrawn. This is not due to any shortcoming of leadership or planning, but is an opportunity to continue courageously leading and looking forward as we foresee these challenges and rise to meet them. I will present to you the two water options, water rate options that we have and the Public Work Advisory Board recommendations on how to proceed. I'm going to provide you some of the upsides and the downsides that we have identified for each of these options. The first option is titled the cash-funded option, because we actually intend to collect and pay cash for all of our five-year plan expenses. This requires an immediate average residential water bill increase of forty-four dollars in the spring. Some of the upsides of this is that it does not, we do not have an increase planned next year following this, this increase. We would not incur any new debt, and we would have ongoing capacity of about six million dollars for those one-time projects in our operating fund, and then about seventy-three million dollars for our repair and replacement beginning in fiscal year 2029. Again, that average residential monthly water bill is about thirty-four dollars, and under this option, it would increase to seventy-eight dollars in April. The second option we have is called the cash-bond gradual funded option. This option does have phasing incorporated into it over a couple of years, but I would like to remind council that next year wastewater and environmental compliance are on that two-year cycle for review. So there is a likely, a likely potential overlap of increases that could happen there. Under this option, we would need to bond for eighty million dollars of our CIP within the five-year plan. This would require an immediate average residential water bill increase of seventeen dollars, followed by an additional increase of thirteen dollars in 2025, and at least another sixteen dollars in 2026. It would add eighty million dollars of new debt and forty-three million dollars of anticipated interest paid over the twenty-year bond lifecycle. It is a phased increase, which does allow customers to plan for future cost increases. It allows an acceptable operating capacity of five million dollars for one-time CIP in the operating budget, and then budget, and then an ongoing repair and replacement fund capacity of $66 million in fiscal year And again, that $34 bill becomes 51 next, this coming April, then $64 the following year, and then 80 in 2026. So let's review the Public Works Advisory Board recommendations and their thought process that went into developing their recommendation. They developed these five key criteria that they used to guide their decision-making: the customer impact in the immediate, near-term sense, the customer impact over the five years of the rate plan, does the plan adequately fund the repair and replacement fund, does it adequately fund the operating budget, and lastly, what is the total cost of utility ownership for our customers? Those are our residents and businesses that pay these rates. After identifying these five key decision-making criteria, they then went through an exercise where they individually commented on the benefits and the drawbacks of each option, and those are noted at the bottom of the slide. But they're really lumped into two categories on the, on the, on the benefits, which are, under the cash-funded option, no new debt, and that it builds capacity to deal with the needs of the water fund. They also identified a few drawbacks as well. This option created the biggest initial impact, and that therefore could create difficulty in the immediate near term for customers to pay. Then they looked at the same issues for the gradual option. It had several advantages as well, which get categorized into this provides a smooth ramp up into the new rates, it's still built sufficient capacity to deal with the water needs, and it required a smaller bond than a different rate option, which council has identified is no longer under consideration. There were drawbacks that they identified, lumped into that it still added debt, and that in three years, this plan would actually result in a higher percentage difference than the other option. After they went through all of that, they went and they rated each of these options on all five of the categories that they identified to come to a selected option. The numbers aren't really important. The main, the main identifier here is that they were essentially tied between these two, and a few weeks ago, you all were as well. They discussed the merits and the viability of these two options after becoming tied. So then they, they thought, okay, let's consider how to provide for the needs of the community while minimizing the impact to the residents. Then they settled on a recommendation to you, which they provided in that letter that we delivered to you at the retreat last month. But the main ideas of this, of their recommendations to you are that the cost pressures mandate additional investment in both of these funds. The capital plan is essential to the needs of the community in the water operations. And then they recommended that the council tonight adopt the notice of intent, considering the cash-bond gradual option for water and the solid waste and recycling increase as presented. And then they added on one other recommendation, which is to have staff research financial support options for customers who need assistance. So I've put together this handy comparison slide of the two options, and we'll come back to it in a moment. While council contemplates the options that we have under consideration, I want to walk you and the public through the next steps in the planned outreach for the community so that we're all on the same page. Statutorily, we are required to do the things that are underlined on this slide and in that timeframe. So tonight, the notice of intent. In, in about two and a half months in February, we will come back for council to adopt the selected rate options at that time, and then the rates would go into effect on April 1st. In between now and February, we've got some work to do, and we're going to do some outreach to the community so that our customers are aware of these upcoming changes. The main one to identify is January 24th. We will be holding an open house here at municipal building number one so that our customers can all be, become familiar with what the council has selected. We know that this is a higher-than-usual impact to our customers, and we will want to be sure to notify them of the needs and the timing of this process. So we typically did utilize our digital outreach team because of its low cost and its high reach, but we've heard from the Public Works Advisory Board and from this body that more traditional outreach might be a good thing to do as well. Adding the traditional outreach is much more costly and therefore is the reason for the contingency request tonight. So with that, Mayor and council, the request tonight is to approve the notice of intent and, and the contingency request, and we have one big question for you, which is, which water option does council prefer to select?
Thank you, Eric. It's a very heavy topic. Staff generally likes to come to us at this point with one option, and we asked you to come with both options so that we could have this discussion in a very public manner so that everybody could hear it, but all the discussions about water have led to a bathroom break need. So I would like to take a five-minute break and give you a break to sit down, and then we will come back and come back to this topic, okay? Thank you.
So you know how like under council, like, yeah, so I don't, but I did, right? And look, you can see, like, nothing else up this way, because it's not stayed that way, it's just no day thing. So I was, I think, I don't know, do you mean, I don't know. So Lisa was playing, but she said, I don't really, I don't, I don't know. I'd like to see it, just, I don't know, I don't think it's a sample, but I look at the, it could be, it's a little similar, I think, in the world. She goes, it could be, of course, one or the other, just, yeah, she's like, don't mind, this is what you have, yeah, like, but I, I don't, yeah, I don't, I see all these other, and look, this one, like, I think this is a dangerous, like, seven, so I think, like, a lot of this stuff is actually going bad. Yeah. I told her, I was like, we, yeah, I was like, we have it, we just.
[inaudible]
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 Thank you. I'll bring this meeting back to order. Thank you for indulging us for a couple of minutes to take a break. It gets, it gets hard to sit up here for so long and it is a little chilly in here, so people are feeling that too. Eric, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Eric at this time? Questions? Vice Mayor?
Um, not for Eric in particular. I'm just trying to figure out how we get to the next step. So I don't know if he had something else he needed to add.
I think he just wants guidance from us. He wants us to pick one of the two options so that the staff knows how to move forward with this and then to do the things that were requested up there, which is to adopt the notice of intent and approve the contingency this evening. I would suggest doing them as different motions, just to make sure that it's clear for the record. So we'll bring it back to us for discussion and then if we need Eric, we'll call you back. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. So bring it back here to the dais. I see a couple of microphones on. Councilmember Buckley, did you have a comment or a question?
If I'm allowed to talk, we can discuss now.
We can discuss now, yes.
Well, I actually just had a couple. Where did he go?
Oh, I didn't know. I didn't know you wanted Eric. Sorry. Eric, hack up. There he is.
I'm sorry.
I need my saps today, anyway. It's okay.
Holiday muscle, right?
Yes, that's right.
Hi there. What an easy presentation, right?
Yeah, he's good.
I, you know, I just had a couple of questions if I can now get my little notes in order. Likely when I was, when I went through the sheets that you sent, I kinda had written a lot of them out. But on option one, and I'm favoring the gradual, just so you know, but I'd just like to ask this question. We, it talks about, you know, what, what the increase is and, and that there'll be no debt. When we're increasing, if, if we went with that option, there's, we haven't incurred any debt, so we're getting all this income in. We, what you haven't talked about is the interest that might be occurring. You know, what, because this money is going to sit there until it's needed. And have you put together anything on the amount of interest? Because my thoughts there are, I mean, the option one obviously saves the town a lot of money. I mean, just in what I'm looking at. But my thoughts are if, if there's going to be a large amount of interest accrued, then perhaps that could be offset the number of the increase, so the increase wouldn't be as large.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Buckley. The question regarding, this is essentially a cash flow question, is are we collecting a lot of money upfront that's going to sit around in the bank and accrue interest? The answer is, is mostly no. We're collecting a lot of money upfront to pay for projects immediately. The primary one being the North Water Treatment Plant, which is $677 million. Not all of it is funded by utility rates, but those checks are due over the next three years as the money is coming in. So the rate, the cash funded option is designed so that we have the money coming in at the precise year that we need it.
Yeah. On, on the, the well, the wells that are coming in, that's using some of this, what percentage of that is already prepared for? We should have had something in the budget, and I know it was on, I believe, a five-year plan maybe, or 10-year plan, but we have accelerated that. What is, what is the, the plan for? I mean, is there, is there something in the budget? What's the number in the budget that we already have? Because all of this would not be going just to that, but what percentage?
We, we did have one new well programmed in the operating fund in the five-year plan. And a typical well is about $8 million. So we had about $8 million planned in the five-year plan. But we're bringing forth, forward the full 56 million.
We don't have that. Okay, okay. Well, then that makes sense. You know, obviously I'm going to be looking at this, all of us are going to be looking at this, and I have some other questions. But I, I'm favoring, I, I like option one. I like it because of the amount of money it saves. There's no, the no extra debt for the town. But what, you know, and I, I understand that all of us, you know, the Town of Gilbert has massive increases in inflation and numbers and, and it's kind of mind-boggling when you're, you're in there, as you, as you can see. But on, on option two, we're, we're all talking about, and, and this, I want to bring this up, but we're all talking about the increases that the town has and the inflation that the town has and everything. But what we're not talking about and thinking about, or some, we probably are, some people probably are. But where I'm at is, we're not the only ones. I mean, our residents, we've got residents that are really struggling out there because they are under the same cost of inflation and a lot of them are not getting raises anymore. But yet the inflation, the numbers, and just like the water's going to go up and then SRP is going to be doing a huge increase again. And so I, I just want the residents to know that we're thinking about them as well. Because we have to look at what the cost the town has, but, and I, I think these numbers even on option two are, are a bit high. I understand, being here, I understand why we need to do this and why we're going to probably have to do this. But I think it's important and, and I appreciate that, that you've put a contingency in here to get this out. Because I do feel that if the residents are, you know, have the knowledge of what this is for and all the extremes and the cost and everything, that we'll have a much better reaction from all of this. So that's kind of about it for now. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks, Eric. This may not be a question for you, but it, a table that you showed us at the retreat kind of sparked this question. I'm, I'm still asking for and would like to get, if it's all possible, the total impact to the, the, the normal resident. All of the fees, all of the, everything that is going to increase, what that total amount on a monthly basis? I've heard tonight that their mortgage could increase by 300 some odd dollars a month with the impact fees we're talking about, a typical resident. We're talking about an extra, I don't know, 50 some odd to 60 some odd dollars a month for just the, the water and trash. We haven't talked about wastewater and environmental services yet, but, and then we don't know what property tax may be become. I'm sure it's probably going to stay the same rate, but it still increases by the value of the home. It increases, so the taxes. So I'm still going to be asking for, and Kelly, I'll, I'll probably talk to you some more about this, is I'd still like to get a summary of what is the total impact of everything we're talking about to the typical resident?
Yeah, I know we are, we're working on some of the compilations of that, that data for you, which, some of those, those fees and that information will be shared next month at the council workshop.
Workshop.
But Councilmember Anderson, we, we have 270 lines of service across the town. And we offer them to residents, to businesses, to all different customer types. And it's very difficult for us to know all at once when any of those fees need to be increased. And the end result of which customer that, that, that fee will be, actually, the bill will be footed by. But what we do know is that we have to deal with the water and the trash service tonight. We have looked into these fees extensively. And we know that they do provide the level of service that the community expects, not more. And thankfully, not less. Thank you.
It's a tough one, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Bon Jovi.
Eric, I, I recall, I believe Representative Hendricks was able to bring some money in for, to Gilbert for wells. Has that been included in all this?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Torgason?
The, under the first proposal, it's $44 a month increase. When, if, with all these things staying the same, when would that stop? When would the amount of money necessary to offset this project stop?
We currently do not have plans to, to, to lower the rates.
All right, so in five years, it would just keep collecting money at 44 a month? Seven years, it would keep doing it? 20 years, it would keep doing it?
We review the rates every other year, and so we'll come back and look at them again in two years to see if they're still accurate. And if changes need to be made up or down, this council has in the past reduced rates when we no longer needed additional revenue.
And then, so if we were to do the other option, which involves borrowing money, that, that goes on for 20 years, no matter what?
Right.
So that would, would not, all things staying the same, that wouldn't go away for 20 years?
We have, in some cases, paid back bonds, paid off bonds early when we had additional revenue. But that would be the plan, would be a 20-year bond.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
Thank you for the information this evening and for the insightful discussion on the dais tonight. I support the cash bond gradual option for a couple of reasons. Normally, we'd want to try to avoid debt at all costs. But in this circumstance, with the North Water Treatment Plant, which is the largest capital improvement project, I believe in the state right now for a water project happening, that is a, I think is a special circumstance for a project, and it's going to serve the community for 50 years or more. So I have a hard time kind of increasing the rates for, like, all in, all at once when, when that really should be probably spread out and have the bond. It is, it merits bonding. Additionally, as, as you mentioned, Eric, with the well projects being traditionally or planned to be over 10 years, and we accelerated all of those due to the potential and anticipated shortage of the CAP water. I think those two projects specifically are what provide merit for that bonding. Additionally, with the impact to residents, the gradual option, I believe, provides additional time for our residents to not only plan for the additional expense, but also to plan and implement any water reduction measures that they want to implement in their household. And so I, I'll be supporting that option this evening.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Eric, for all the information. I just want to reiterate that when we show $78.51 in 2024, that's the new bill, not the increase in the bill, because I think that's very easy to get confused. So I, I appreciate the, the slide that you showed, that it was, you know, from 34 to a new bill, because that does make it a little less impactful or, for many people. But I agree with Councilmember Kaprowski. If I am understanding correctly, the bonding, this is a cash and bond. So this isn't going out for everything with the bond. So the, the dollars that you're showing, only a portion of that will be paying back the bond, not the entire increase. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Telke, that is correct.
Okay, all right. My, nobody likes to take on debt. I would say that Gilbert has an excellent reputation and financial policy position that we do everything we can to pay that debt down early and reduce those interest costs. And I, I am assured that that will happen again. I, I really have concerns for the residents and the businesses. We were just looking at residential rates, but it impacts business as well, that in order to phase that increase in is easier for us all to accept. And, and I appreciate all the work of the Public Works Advisory Board and we'll stand behind their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't like taking on debt. And I know that we're going to have to review again in two years because the council decided a couple of years ago, instead of trying to hit all of this at one time when needed, that we would do it in a cycle, right? And so we had an increase two years ago, and now we're looking at another increase now. We're probably going to be facing another increase for other portions of our Town of Gilbert bill. And to take on $43 million extra in debt that we have to pay back over that time just doesn't sit well with me. And, and that was a reason that we discussed it at the retreat and that we wanted to bring the discussion here tonight so that the public could hear what we're facing. We have some difficult issues that the town needs to do. When I first saw a presentation for the North Water Treatment Plant, I think the bill was around $430 million. And I nearly had a heart attack when I saw $430 million, and now we're talking $677 million. That is a huge increase in just the past four or five years for one project. And it's a project that, yes, will, will survive, you know, will survive decades out in the community to provide fresh water. The one thing that people probably don't understand that you sort of said in your presentation, but we don't talk about enough, is the quality of water coming into our community has changed over the last couple of decades. And we have to do more as a community to make sure that that water is up to the level that is needed to provide to our residents. And they think it just comes out of the tap and it's beautiful, right? Well, you might not like the smell or the taste. It's Gilbert water, but that's another story. It is, it is costing us more to make sure that that water is to the levels than it needs to be. And in the time that we're trying to meet all the qualifications that we need to make, the federal government's also increasing those qualifications. So now you have to meet other needs for the water to be qualified, to be acceptable to our residents. So we're constantly facing new issues all the time as, as a community and how to, how to run this business. The Town of Gilbert is a business within your community. And we have to find ways to make sure that we're providing the services that we have always provided to our residents and the services that they expect from the Town of Gilbert. Our residents expect a certain level. They always have, and they love certain aspects of our community. We were kind of joking up here that, that the trash you mentioned, the increase in garbage that we've had over the last couple of years, that we've seen really since COVID. During COVID, it was immense, and now it has just continued. We're, I think, buying more online. There's more boxes coming to your home. There's more packaging coming to your home. There's more stuff that you're putting out into your trash. That has to go someplace. It has to be moved someplace. It has to be paid for by the town in order to dispose of all of that. So we're all living in a very different time than we were even just a few years ago. Pre-COVID, it was one thing. Shopping online was one thing. Now it's completely different than it was then. I have lots of boxes coming to my house all the time. I will be supporting the cash funded version of this. I know it's a hard hit for everybody. You can go out onto the Town of Gilbert's website and use the calculator. I just pulled mine up right now. My home will go from $21.13 to $28.23 for the water. And so to look at this potential increase, I would rather face it at one time, and I know everybody else is, everything's increasing. Councilmember Buckley mentioned it. Everything's increasing. Gas is high, food is high, groceries are high. And we're all facing the same thing. We are residents of the community. We're all facing the same thing as we're making this decision for our residents, too. Councilmember Torgason, you turned your microphone on.
Yeah, just a question. If you bonded, you get $80 million very quickly, I assume, or access to it?
Yes.
All right, and the rate is 4.5% on that?
Depends.
That's about. I think that's what she told you.
In that range.
Would there be a savings to pulling that in now and paying for things as quickly as possible because of the increase in construction? Is there an offset there that, that could benefit borrowing the money? Basically, like when you get a house at a super low interest rate, it's not worth refinancing because the money's worth less tomorrow.
Right. I, Councilmember Torgason, kind of the idea of arbitrage as far as timing a project that we know will escalate in, in costs in the future at a higher rate than the interest that we're paying on it. We will, under this, this gradual bond option, have the ability to pay cash for a certain amount of time until we have to bond. And we will, we generally do the bond at the last moment. And there's multiple reasons for that, timing the, the interest rates as best as possible. Also, our ability to actually execute these projects. If we could do them all, all next year, we would be happy in, in the waterside. We just know that we can't tear up the entire town all at once. We, we can only do them over a five-year period, just with our, with our ability. So there's not really the option to, to take out the money early and accelerate projects even more.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
I'm ready to make a motion to direct staff to publish the notice of intention to increase rates and fees for water and solid waste and recycling, rates and fees with the cash bond gradual option.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Telke. Please vote. Motion passes four to three. Guess we're moving forward with a cash bond option. Next, we would need a motion for the contingency.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date for February 6, 2024.
I'll second.
I was trying to get to the thing that I know the staff needs the most, which is the contingency. We have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski to set the meeting date for, the hearing date for February 6, 2024. We have a second by Council, Vice Mayor Telke. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. One more.
Make a motion for the contingency request for $70,000 for traditional media and print educational campaign outreach activities.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Telke. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Well, thank you, everyone. I know that was a tough topic. And we have a decision to move forward. We will now move on to our next administrative item, which is, as mentioned above, as mentioned before, the review and discussion of possible action for a final report. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just start with the process that we'll be using tonight, since this is a little different than normal agenda items. We will, I'll review the background of how we got here. The mayor will then have an opportunity to speak, and then we'll ask a motion from the council. And just to be noted, that the mayor does not vote on this particular action item. Background for this issue is September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, council voted to have a second investigation into the original ethics complaint against Mayor Peterson regarding the removal of citizens from a meeting. Should be noted that this action was an exception due to questions about whether all parties were interviewed during the original investigation and should not be seen as a precedent for future claims. We have a new process in place that clearly outlines steps that will be taken. The complaint we are discussing this evening falls under the previous policy. The investigation took place, and the report received from the investigator states there is no evidence of violations of the ethics policy sections identified. It should be noted that investigations into violating the ethics policy is just that. It is not a typical criminal or civil investigation. The attorney is charged with identifying if any action taken is unethical under the official code. We've learned over the past few years that it is very rare that an action taken by a member of the council, unless leaning towards criminal, would be declared unethical due to the inability to prove the intent of the person's action, which is why, under our new policy, we require the complainant to meet with the council member and a mediator to try to resolve any misunderstandings prior to a long and expensive investigation. This evening, there are several actions that could be taken. The first is you take no action. The complaint will be deemed dismissed with prejudice, which means there's no motion and that one was not seconded. The second option is adopt the report's finding that the mayor's conduct did not constitute an ethics violation of the former code with no further action, which is required following a motion and a second. Third option is to accept receipt of the report as presented, but consider additional council action following a motion and a second, which means the council is only accepting the report but not adopting the findings. Finally, the option is to reject the report's finding and that conduct did not, let me restate that, reject the report's finding that conduct did not constitute an ethics violation of the former code, which means the council believes that there was an ethical violation. It may direct to action penalties following a motion and a second. So that's what's before us. I believe everybody has received a copy of the report. And so, Mayor, at this point, I'll just ask if you have any comments you'd like to share prior to moving forward.
I was able to comment at the end, after everyone else commented last time. Is everybody else going to comment, and then I don't get a final say?
I'll ask the council if they're prepared to do that. Is that fine?
I was able to comment after everybody spoke last time.
Okay. Let me, I just got to note it, so I keep us on track.
I just think that we're never consistent with what we do. I think we need some consistency.
Right. That's my goal. That is my goal, so I'm just trying to figure it out. Okay, so here. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Anything at this point? All right. Councilmembers, are there any comments that you would like to make at this point? Councilmember Banjivani?
Yep. You know, with everything we've heard tonight, we have a lot of hard work ahead to accomplish and a lot of decisions to make. And it's time that all politics stops and responsibility begins. Sometimes you have to put your foot down and make a statement. A few weeks ago, Councilmember Torgerson and I went to Atlanta to the League of Cities Conference. We met with twenty-five hundred other cities and towns, and one thing we took away from that conference was that Gilbert is years ahead of other cities that we spoke to as far as infrastructure and services, quality of services. The reason for that is because we've had a hundred and three years of council policy and directives, followed through by a hundred and three years of great town managers, executive teams, and a hundred and three years of devoted staff. It is that creates, that is what creates a great town, and I'm proud to serve this community. With that as a backdrop, I want to talk about a decision that this council made late September. The council voted four to one to reopen an ethics complaint against Mayor Peterson from several Gilbert citizens, because they felt it was an unfair investigation because they weren't actively part of it. The majority of council requested that a new investigation be performed, and that's what we expected to happen. The citizens involved specifically requested that Councilmembers Torgerson, Anderson, and myself be interviewed by the investigator. We weren't. Again, witnesses weren't questioned. In the final report, the investigator was quoted as saying, and I quote, "I determined that these interviews of Anderson, Torgerson, and myself were not going to be fruitful." How can an investigator make a conclusion that interviewing us would not have been fruitful without interviewing us to determine whether our interview would be fruitful? The only thing that isn't fruitful was the logic within that logic. Fruitful for whom? The town? The citizens? The mayor? I would have simply settled for it being fruitful for the sake of doing a thorough When was the decision whether or not to interview myself, Councilmember Anderson or Torgerson, made? Was it made before or after the interview with the mayor? Either way, it doesn't look good. Was this interview with the mayor so fruitful that it determined that interviewing us would not be fruitful? We, as a council, gave the directive that we wanted an investigation to be completed, and what we received instead, in my opinion, was an opinion of whether an investigation should be performed. Every single council member sitting up here tonight should be upset that our directive was ignored and not followed up by the investigator. Now, not every council decision has been a hundred percent correct over the past hundred and three years, but I guarantee that every directive was followed up on. Policies and directives aren't multiple choice or suggestions. They're the foundation of good practice in government. I ask that every council member tonight vote yes to accept the finding of the report, but vote no on the findings of the report itself. Fellow council members, I want every majority vote that we cast be executed every time. I want our votes to count and be respected, regardless of the issue. I feel if we accept the findings of this report tonight, we would be approving to ignore the very thing we asked that when we pass the vote, a fair and thorough investigation. If we vote to accept the findings of this report tonight, we'll be sending a message that our vote and our directives don't matter, because we all know this investigation was not thorough. And it isn't just our vote. It's the voice of every citizen in the great town of Gilbert, who depends on, who depend on the truth, even if it makes us look bad. During our mediation, the mayor gave me some great advice. She told me that when I lean back in my chair, on the dais, I disappear. I disappear to people watching me on TV, and I disappear to all of you in the chamber. What I ask tonight is that we take the feedback that was offered to me. Don't lean back in your chair tonight and disappear. When the council gives direction, it matters, and it must happen. Please do not accept the finding of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Torgerson?
We did ask for an investigation. It's hilariously indefensible, woefully uncomplete. Also, though, these investigations don't really bear any fruit. As was said in one point, it's the mindset of the person being investigated. Can you prove how they felt, what they were thinking, that kind of thing? We've spent a lot of money going through these. The tiny little tax break we were able to provide, we've spent more than that over the last couple of years on these things. The actual complaint may actually be more of a First Amendment complaint, more of something beyond just ethics, because I think the way we've defined ethics and what's meant by it and how it's looked at by an attorney, it's not the same thing. I don't want to spend more money going through fruitless investigations. There's no need to, it's a waste of money. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of effort, and it bears no fruit. I don't agree with the conclusion based on a lack of investigation. If I felt everything was done, I can easily accept someone's interpretation of ethics or whether it should have even been one, but it wasn't done. And I personally don't ever want to waste money for this town again. It's just, it was wasteful and incomplete and a poor job. It stuns me that we're even talking about it, but I don't want to somehow make this mess continue. It's been just wrong from the get-go, as far as the, how it was handled by the first investigator or the second. So I don't want to adopt the findings, and I don't want to pay for another.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Anderson?
I'll just basically say that pretty much the same things that Councilmember Torgerson has just mentioned. I just want to get this over with, whatever it takes to get it over with. I do think the investigation was somewhat questionable, but I am more concerned about the possibility of this being elevated to a First Amendment challenge in the courts. We've already seen what challenges in the First Amendment have done to Gilbert, rising to the Supreme Court. I don't want to see something like that happen again. So I'm more concerned about that, and I just want to get this out of the way. If that means we don't accept the findings, but we accept the report, that's fine, but I want to get this completed. I look forward to anything in the future going through our new process. I think it'll be a much more fair process, and we'll get to the, get to what we want to find in transparency with the new process. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Buckley?
I just have a question. If you could, if we could explain in depth, because this is obviously the first time something's gone this far. If we do the motion that Chuck is recommending, that we accept, can you say what your motion was again?
Accept the report, but do not accept the findings of the report?
Right. So if we were to vote for that, this is over, correct? Because, I mean, I agree. I don't think the findings, I think they could have been better, but we need this to be over, and we did give Mr. Rife a chance to have another hearing and have another investigation. And, I mean, this could go on and on and on if we do that, and I think that we did give him that opportunity to have another hearing, and it's unfortunate that it came out the way it did, but I agree that this needs to be over, and I don't want to see the town spend more money either.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do believe we can include that in a motion. If we go towards accepting the receipt of the report, we could, as we did with the other ethics complaint, note that that was the end. We were not going to reopen it. So I believe we can do that as part of the motion. Any other comments, Councilmember?
I just want to clarify, for Councilmember Buckley, that I'm, what I'm saying is that it has nothing to do with the outcome of the investigation. I'm saying that I don't believe a proper investigation was done. That's why I don't want to accept the findings of the investigation.
Any other comments? Fine. Thank you. Then I'll make some comments before we turn it over to the mayor. First and foremost, I want the residents, businesses, and employees to know that it is the priority of this council to stay focused on finding best solutions to the many challenges facing our community due to significant cost escalations in aging community and approaching build-out, which will eliminate growth funds to help us keep in front of the infrastructure and safety needs of this community. That's where we need to be keeping our eye on the ball, and these priorities continue to be the top of mind for all of us, continuing to address the mayor's pattern of behavior as a distraction and cannot continue. As I mentioned earlier, the burden of proof regarding intent in this ethics complaint has fallen short regarding the reference sections of our former ethics policy. It is within the rights of the mayor, who is acting as chair, to ask for people to be removed from chambers. However, having the right to do it and doing the right thing are two separate issues. There's no defendant of proof, one way or the other, as to how disruptive members of the audience have become from my vantage point of being online during that meeting, so I can only speak for myself in that aspect. What I will say is that the level of unrest and angry residents filling the temporary council chambers in the public safety training facility had escalated each meeting over several months, which resulted in additional security measures being put in place. Based on that escalation, I can imagine the mayor became overwhelmed and acted poorly in a moment of frustration and anger. The bottom line is that removing people from the council's chambers should always be a last resort. With this through our civil discourse training and through our Arizona League of Cities training, we also learn that it falls squarely on the shoulders of the city mayor to regain control and establish decorum should a meeting get out of order. Sadly, the mayor continues to display inconsistencies in the management of meetings during stressful periods, which has brought us to this moment. This is not a one-off situation, rather a series of missteps that have come at a high cost to our community's reputation. I'm saddened that she doesn't acknowledge or recognize that she could or should have handled these situations differently, and that, ladies and gentlemen, to me, is an unfortunate lack of leadership, and this community deserves better. I've worked this past year with fellow council members and staff to bring forward new policies and procedures to ensure we don't have this happen again, but even with those policies in place, the responsibility will still fall to the mayor to keep decorum and rise above the noise and emotion to ensure the business of the town is conducted in a fair manner. It is because of her actions and lack of willingness to accept assistance and advice regarding these leadership skills that leads me to believe that the mayor requires additional training to continue in the role of chairing these council meetings. With that, I will stop, and I'll ask you if you have any comments before we go back into what action can be taken this evening.
Well, as I've said before, I honor the process and welcome the findings, and like the rest of the council, have no hand in this investigation process, and am concerned with the appearance of penalizing me by not accepting, by not being accepting due to the concerns about the investigation process that I had nothing to do with. It saddens me to see that this is continuing in the community. I've loved this community, and I've served this community honorably for many years and will continue to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. So actions that can be taken this evening, I want to go over them one more time. Take no action, which means there is not a motion or a second, and by doing so, the complaint will be deemed dismissed with prejudice. Secondly, adopt the report's finding that the mayor's conduct did not constitute an ethics violation of the former code with no further action, which will need a motion in a second. Third option is to accept- Third option is to accept the receipt of the report as presented and consider additional council action, which requires a motion and a second. Again, by accepting the receipt of the report, it will mean that the council is only accepting the report, but not adopting the findings. Lastly, reject the report's finding that conduct did not constitute an ethics violation of the former code, which means the council believes that there was an ethical violation and may direct action penalties following a motion and a second. I wanted to just restate a few points that were made regarding concerns about the investigation as a whole. And that there, Councilmember Banjavani, that you were open to accepting the report, but not the findings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Before I make a motion, I just want to make sure everybody was heard and felt that they provided input before I make the motion. So based on the comments made this evening and the pattern of behavior displayed these past three years, I'd like to make a motion to accept receipt of the report as presented with a note, while some witnesses were not interviewed, this complaint will not be reopened. This is, we're done with this complaint at this point. Secondly, ask the council to approve the mayor, to require the mayor to complete the council and open meeting law training presented by the Arizona League of Cities. In addition, I would like to place on the agenda on December 12th a report of if the training has been completed and if there are any additional penalties that may need to be considered should the mayor refuse, or if there is any other penalties that the council felt needed to be made. So I'm going to ask for a second, and then I'd like to explain a few things.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I just want to note that this action does not require the mayor to leave the dais during council meetings or relinquish her chair role. However, we do have the power to expel any member on the dais should it be deemed appropriate. The lack of skills to effectively chair meetings during stressful times does not raise to the level of expulsion. However, if the mayor chose to refuse the training, it may be something we'd have to consider in the future. Upon approval by the, the council staff would work to schedule a training session. This training session is open to all members of the council as well. And it encourages all to attend to ensure that any mayor that sits here finds himself in a situation, in a stressful situation that the mayor was in at that time, that we are able to help that mayor get through that so that we don't, even though it falls on the shoulders of the mayor, we should be trained to be able to help in that situation should we need to. So with that, unless there's any comments to say I didn't mistake that?
I just have a follow-up question to what you just were recommending, that open meeting law training between now and December 12th, is that what you're saying? Through the League of Arizona Cities and Towns? I just want to be clear that what you're voting on and that what I would be agreeing to. I can't find any training for the League of Arizona Cities and Towns?
They will conduct a training separate. And so after the motion, we would direct staff to get that training on your schedule. The item on December 12th is a report on what the status is. If you have training scheduled, I think that would be taken into.
That's another, because I'm traveling next week, so.
Yeah, I know. So I know that was a little out of order, but this is an important situation, and I think it was fine that we communicated. So we have a motion on the floor by myself, seconded by Councilmember Banjavani, to accept the receipt of the report as presented with a note that while some witnesses were not interviewed, this complaint will not be reopened. Through council action, require the mayor to complete the council and open meeting law training presented by the Arizona League of Cities, and add to the agenda on December 12th a status of that training and where we are in that, and if there was a need to present any other penalties at that time so that we make sure that by open meeting law that we have actually presented that correctly. So with that, we'll vote. The motion passes with a six-zero vote. I just want to make sure that the direction, that staff understands the direction at this point. Patrick, would you have your staff organize a training session and send out the calendar invite to all council members?
Vice Mayor Tilke, yes.
And the goal would be to have a date on the schedule before the December 12th, not that the training had to be completed. Is that okay? Okay. Yes. It is, it wouldn't be fair, and you're right. And thank you. I was, I was going to mention that at the end, Mayor, but I appreciate you bringing that up. And Chevelli, that you would add that, that agenda item to make sure that we can have a full discussion and follow all the open meeting laws?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Mayor, with that, I think we're done.
Thank you. Moving on, we have no policy items, and our future meetings will be December 12th. We only have one meeting in December, so it'll be the only meeting for next month. And right now, we'll go to communications, report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple announcements today. First, I'd like to recognize our information technology department who is a winner in the 2022 Digital Cities Survey by the Center for Digital Government and is a 2023 Top 100 Technology Team Award winner. And then I'd also like to congratulate our former deputy chief technology officer, Eugene Mihia, who is now in his new role as our Chief AI Strategy and Transformation Officer. We've already, we have a policy under review right now that is soon to be implemented, and we have several of our technology partners with AI-embedded technologies that we will be using in the organization soon. And we look forward to all the benefits this new technology is going to offer to our community and to our service lines. So we congratulate Eugene Mihia once again, and looking forward to his leadership in that area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Patrick. Congratulations to Eugene. Next, we have a report from council. Any members of council have something to report? Councilmember Torgerson?
Hey, this evening, council heard a study session about the Heritage District Wayfinding and Place Marketing Effort, which was hours ago. Most of you probably weren't here. If any members of the public missed today's study session or the redevelopment commission study session, a final study session will be held next Wednesday, December 6th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Planning Commission. And as a reminder, the town of Gilbert, in conjunction with the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, will be hosting a Heritage District meetup on Thursday, December 7th, from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. The event will feature a walking tour of the Heritage District moderated by representatives from Gilbert's Office of Economic Development. And you can expect to learn more about our current and future projects within the district, including infrastructure projects, higher education, private developments, and the activation of public spaces for retail, art, and culture. It's a free event. You can sign up via the chamber website at www.gilbertaz.com. And I did want to express that the trip that Councilmember Banjavani and I went on last week to Atlanta, while some things I was aghast at, the one thing I really walked away from was how far ahead and truly efficient our staff is doing their job. I'm listening to people that are far behind us and not, not as focused on the ball, such as the water projects we've talked about, et cetera. And my belief that we are doing things as best as can be done was reinforced by watching the problems other people were experiencing. And it was a great learning session in that respect. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Tilke?
Mayor, I was presented a card for your birthday, and I believe you have flowers and maybe some goodies in the back. So happy birthday. I hope you had a great day.
Thank you. I did have a great day. It was a couple of days ago. Next, any other comments, Councilmember Banjavani?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Councilmember Torgerson said. It was night and day for us in that, in that conference hearing. Other cities and other towns had been maybe around for a lot longer than us, but, you know, didn't have a clue in some of the problems that we've already solved. So it was good to see, and I knew we had a great staff and a great executive team here, but it really just enforced that going to that meeting, being around 2,500 other cities and towns with issues that we've already solved. And I really believe in the city of the future and the plan that we have here from going to that. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll move on to a report from the mayor. So I mentioned that I would be traveling next week. I will be headed to Washington, D.C. for Pearl Harbor Day. It's the 82nd anniversary of that fateful day within our country, and there will be a wreath-laying ceremony at the Navy Memorial. The keynote speaker will be Nikki Strattan, who is the sponsor for the USS Arizona submarine. And this will be at no cost to the town because I will be paying for this trip out of my own pocket. There are a lot of holiday events coming up in Gilbert. I was going to try and list them all, but it's easier just to go to gilbertaz.gov, scroll down to the latest news, and there's a, there's a link for "Celebrate the Holidays with These Gilbert Events." They include Ride with Santa in Gilbert Fire, Jingle Bell Express, Blue Line of Love Holiday Drive with Gilbert P.D., Photos with Santa with Gilbert P.D., Santa Paws Pictures. We all love our pets here in Gilbert. Hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving and our Gilbert Days Parade. We got about 10 minutes of pouring rain, about 15 minutes before the parade started. So we were all a little drenched, but we had a wonderful time out there celebrating with our residents. Meeting adjourned.